Not a hundred percent, but majority.
Oh, yeah. He lived here. He lived here. He's not from here, but he lived here a long time ago.
He's an immigrant.
I heard everything went on well without a hitch. And I sent Angel in.
Yes.
After we got married to him.
Okay, it is six o'clock straight up. We're gonna go ahead and begin our Tuesday July 2025 work session. Jumping right into it, and Mr. Hager is.
He's coming.
Okay.
Should be there.
There, Bob?
Hey, stay cool.
Oh, yeah, yeah, definitely. Are you finally here officially? I think it's fixed now.
Sorry, Hager, your mic is my unit.
I have a heater, but I haven't had to use it yet. It's always really cold. She does sound good, where you have to wear like a hoodie and everything.
We're just trying to get Mr. Hager up and running. Yeah, I think while they're doing that, we can go ahead and discuss the agenda items. Item number one. Say, Mayor.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. So jumping right into the consent agenda. Item four eight, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with legacy ready mix LLC for ready mix concrete through the city of Grand Prairie contract five eight four seven eight for a one-year term. With a renewal option for three additional one-year terms and an estimated contract amount not to exceed three hundred sixty-nine thousand eight hundred and ten dollars, subject to city council authorization. Public Works Director and Assistant Public Works Director, Grant John Mohammed.
Any questions on this item?
Four B, consider a resolution awarding a bid and authorizing a cooperative purchasing agreement with Kirk Coe for pavement crack and joint ceiling services through the city of Grand Prairie contract two one one eight six. For a fourteen-month term, an estimated contract amount not to exceed two hundred fifty thousand seven hundred fifty-four dollars sixty-eight cents, subject to city council appropriation. Public Works and Assistant Public Works Director here. Don't answer any questions.
Questions on item B?
Mayor believes that concludes my shortest ever consent.
Let's keep it up. Okay, item two, city council calendar, city secretary.
Thank you, Mayor. On July fourth, we have the Independence Day Parade at nine a.m. and the Independence Day celebration, which starts at four at Armstrong Park. July seventh is the Bond Committee meeting at six, at six thirty. July ninth is D C D C Special Call Meeting at six. And July tenth is the Resident Card Product Program Community Meeting at six o'clock at the senior center. July fourteenth is P and Z meeting at seven. July fifteenth, we have an Audit Committee meeting at two p.m. and here in the briefing room, also the city council meeting at six. And July twenty-second is the Board of Commissioners' Joint Meeting and Block Party, which will be at the Duncanville Field House on the twenty-second. July twenty-fourth is coffee with the mayor at twelve p.m. at the senior center. July twenty-eighth is the D C D C Reckless Meeting at six p.m. July twenty-ninth is the Budget Workshop at four p.m. And July thirtieth is the tenth meeting at six thirty. That's all I have. Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. Now moving on to item three, briefings and presentations, the first briefing, a review and consideration of proposed amendments to the city charter. Thank you.
Mayor, if you want me to, I think Mr. Hager, I'm not sure, do we have the audio fix for Mr. Hager? I know that he had provided a chart which we attached in the staff report. And I don't know if there's anything else he wanted to add. I think what he was looking for was correction and comments, basically from you so that he could prepare the ordinance. Mr. Hager, is that correct?
Yeah.
We're having trouble. He said it's correct.
Keep coming.
Excuse me, Bob, the volume isn't turned up on our end. Give us a second. We've got somebody coming in. You have no choice.
Mayor, I'm not sure if you want to go to three B.
Bob, 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 can you go ahead? What was your suggestion?
Maybe we go to three B while they're working on it.
All right, let's jump on down to three B while we're getting our sound issues corrected. Council briefing and discussion on ordinance to amend chapter one, division three.
Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Is backup? Yes, we can. We can now.
Yeah, so to reiterate, I just need, you know, whether you want me to prepare an ordinance for all those changes, I think they're minor. And so if you let Mr. Finch or Chiquita know tonight, if there's anything you don't want considered, let me know. And I will prepare the ordinance for our first meeting in August to call a special election in November. And with the proposition will be actually in the resolution. Requesting the special election. We won't have it in November. Or if you want me just eliminate it to the term limit issue, I can do that as well, obviously.
Okay, so that's really the question. We've got a chance to read through it. It covers a lot of cleanup and additions. But the main, I think the main reason that we started this was to consider changing the term limits from two years to three years. So I'd ask the council for Mr. Hager's information as to whether or not we want to go through with the full packet of changes that he's suggesting? Or do we want to focus on the term limit issue?
Will all of these require a item on the ballot? Like each change will have to have A, B, C, D?
Did you get that, Bob? Bob, can you hear us?
Just sort of have one, a couple of options to like ZZ, I mean, it is double.
Well, we thought this was gonna be a short.
Mayor?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, barely.
Okay, I'll speak up. The question around the table right now is, do any or all of these proposed amendments need to go through an election?
All of them will have to go through an election.
Okay.
And they're individual items?
Pretty much. There may be a couple of them that I can kind of lash together just to update language, but yes, they would be individual by and large.
Okay.
Thank you, Mayor. The item number seven, seven point oh four, numbers, selection, and term of counsel. Remove all transition comments in charter regarding conversation, single-member districts, and at-large subsections. Could we please explain what is that?
Okay, that, that is information, when, whenever we went single-member districts, the proposition and, or the charter had trend, what I call transition provisions. So the first election after the passage, if it was approved, had certain members would be elected in odd number of years, certain number, and even number of years, and it says, starting with the next election. Since we, that was a long time ago, it's really just surplusage in the, in the charter. They could just be removed now that you have single-member districts. The, the charter would always provide for that we have single-member districts for places one through five, at-large, in the, in the mayor's position would be voted on by everyone. That would remain. It's just that transition, starting in the first election after the passage of this charter amendment, starting in whatever year it is.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
So when we, we vote on the ordinance, we approve the ordinance, then it goes on the ballot, remember, correct?
It, it's a resolution on the special election. And propositions that would be presented to the voters will be in the body of the resolution. And if there's any that you decide you don't want at the last hour, we can just strike those and then proceed with the remainder that you approve.
So when we go to vote on the ordinance, is that a law of a public hearing?
No. The, the ordinance, you mean the, the calling of the special election?
Yes, sir.
The, the calling of special election does not require a public hearing.
Would we want to do a public hearing?
Obviously, the, the citizens would have a right to vote yea or nay on those, when they're presented. If they pass, ones that do pass, there would be an ordinance, Mr. Koontz, that would in effect amend the charter itself, and then all that's sent to the Secretary of State after the canvas and the ordinance that's approved.
So there is a vote, that you get a chance to vote, but your, your suggestion that there might be a public hearing would be to have a conversation?
If, if not a public hearing, I mean, like I said in the beginning, it's making sure that public education component is there. And I know the vote obviously is public input and a voting, but even prior to us voting on the ordinance.
Bob, when would that, a vote?
Well, the, the, when you say ordinance, it's really, I don't need an ordinance called special election. I just need a resolution to call a special election. And then the propositions themselves are contained within the body of the resolution that's voted on the council to call that special election.
And when would that special election be?
No one would.
Okay, so that would give us time if we wanted to as a council.
Yeah, most, most, most what happens is a summary is written up with all the propositions in them, and then basically write a little small paragraph what the effect of the passage of it is.
So what would you, what would you, what would be your desire to be able to, once we have that summary, to be able to have a gathering of the public?
Well, I mean, it sounds like we have sufficient time, so obviously, when the resolutions are approved.
The, the, the council can, and the city cannot actually spend money to either vote or to support or defeat a proposition. All they can do is do education. So if you were to vote to approve the resolution to call a special election for these charter amendments, we could provide, what most cities do is they produce a brochure with a proposition language in it, and then a small paragraph as to what the effect of that would be. Without there saying you need to vote for or against something, they would just explain what the requested proposition is, and that's usually published usually two to three weeks before early voting would start, so around the first of October.
Okay.
That's the input the city could publish, and they could, of course, put it on their website and, and, and print copies. They can put a, a, I'll call it cheat sheet, a summary, if you will, in a water bill for educational purposes, or provide copies of the brochure to the members of the public.
Okay, but what I think I'm hearing Mr. Koontz saying, what you're saying is, it would be appro, it would be appropriate for us to, prior to that November election, have a meeting with the community to discuss with them what is going to come in that resolution.
Well, we have to be careful that it doesn't, we can do it in an educational.
That's, that's what he's suggesting.
Meeting, if, if you so desire, but we have to be careful not to appear that we're asking them to vote for or defeat a proposition. So for educational purposes, yes.
Okay, so we'll work to, to figure out the timing of such a meeting, and then we'll get back with you and make sure we're on the up and up when we do have that educational meeting.
Absolutely. I, I understand what you're saying now.
Yeah, I got a lot of a nodding head, so I'll assume it is, please.
Okay, we'll prepare it, and then if you think that the night that you do want to strike something, please feel free to, to do that. And we, if we do in fact pass that resolution, then we'll do an educational meeting with the public if the council so desires.
Anything else on item A, three A?
Can I just say I'm recommending we have all of them.
I'm sorry.
That we have all of them.
Okay, I think you have to put your hand, so, okay. Did the rescue get that, Mr. Maggiore?
Yeah, I, I got, go ahead and prepare for all of them, and then, of course, if, if you guys change your mind the night of passage, it would be easy for us just to eliminate one of them if you so desire and then move on to the remainder. That'd be fine. That's fine with me. I just want to know what to do to prepare for the maximum or the minimum. We can always go to the minimum, obviously, and prepare for the maximum. I'm fine with that.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item three B, council briefing and discussion on an ordinance to amend chapter one, division three, section one through twelve, creating a process for the naming of a municipal building or land.
So, Mayor, I'll, I'll take this one, if you don't mind. So this one goes back some time. Obviously, attached to your staff report is the twenty sixteen ordinance that was passed by the city of Duncanville, which originally put the naming of parks and park facilities under the Parks Section of Code, section, chapter one, division three is where it's at. But when that ordinance was adopted back in twenty sixteen, it spelled out the whole first section on how parks and park facilities basically get named in the process and the recommendations to the Parks Committee, but section one twelve was said, other municipal buildings or lands, and it was, it said reserved. There was nothing there. So what you have before you, and this is just a discussion item, no action obviously this evening, would be to actually insert some language into that particular section. Council having final authority regarding the naming or renaming of municipal buildings, facilities, city-owned, city-owned lands. And then it kind of talks about a process that we would go through to engage the public in research when a name is brought forth. That would include historical significance, geographic relevance, if you go to the next page. Community contribution of the individual or recognizing the family or the name, cultural and social impacts, the heritage of the community, public safety or military service, functional or descriptive naming, and the avoidance of commercial naming. Obviously, you've got the red line version of your packet. Councilmember Mac Burnett and I had a conversation. He requested this come forward to you. If you wanted to take the next step with this, what we would recommend is that you refer this to the Parks and Rec Board for some comments and some feedback in order to come back to you. But this again is just kind of a, a draft first start for a conversation piece.
Okay, but that reference to the Parks Board is not in this information that we have up here?
Well, there's, there's no action for you this evening, other than we could certainly refer it to the Parks Board, but because this would go into the Parks and Rec section of code, it would make sense for it to be Parks.
Okay. Is that important because they, they oversee all our buildings that we own?
Great question, and I think you and I talked a little bit about this, right? I think that there may have been some change embarked, feel free to jump in here. Where now it's actually facilities and facility management falls under Public Works, but at the time, I think this ordinance was originally done, parks had more involvement. So the way that the code is currently written is division three, this park and facility naming is all in that section where the parks stuff is.
Okay, okay. Is everybody okay with that?
Do we want to keep it in the parks section or?
That's probably a.
Most logical.
Well, it's probably a late discussion that needs to take place sometime down the road, because if we go to change all this right now, we're just pushing it further out. I, I think that's why I'm here, because we'd have to go through another process to establish that first.
I agree, Mayor. I mean, we've talked a little bit about, obviously, we've got the comp plan right now. We've talked about zoning, code that needs to be updated, maybe even a code audit. You've got to be careful, as you know, because then you get into situations where the code starts conflicting with each other, and so, you know, that might be part of a more robust review of the city code.
So is everyone, everyone on board with running it through the Parks Commission?
It would just be for feedback, and we'll obviously bring that feedback back to you and figure out what to do from there. Okay, good. That's it for this one.
Thank you. All right, and a final work session. All right, and a final work session briefing is item 3C, city council will receive a briefing on the brush and bulk collection efforts in partnership with Republic Services.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, yes, this is a presentation on the brush and bulk efforts that we've had over the last, since June nineteenth, to try to catch up with all the excess accumulation. I'm in attendance tonight, we do have Chris Green for Republic Services and Mauro Flores, and then in addition to Matt Bryan and Shaham Muhammad, we also have Joel Doherty from Public Works who all were involved in this effort. And just a quick timeline of how we got here and where we've been. So we had a lot of storms in May and June and as a result, there was just an excess of accumulated brush and bulk. And we started noticing this started putting a strain on Republic's operations, not only just trying, they have one truck for the whole city, not only trying to just collect all this brush, but then the time it was taken to go out to the landfill off I-45 and wait in line with all the other cities' trucks that were collecting. And so recognizing that on June twentieth, we hire Camacho Tree Service and Landscaping to assist us with the brush and bulk effort. And we utilized their services in the past and so they went to work on Saturday, June twenty first, and really focused on the southern part of the city. And then Republic, working with them, brought a second truck in on Monday, June twenty third to help us as well. And so this is just a real quick recap of the map of our brush and bulk collection of the city, you know, we have four quadrants and you can see here we have different service areas, north of Wheatland, we've got one, two, three, four, and five, and then south of Wheatland, it's six through ten. And just based on a lot of the calls we're receiving and looking out, going out into field and assessing, you know, assessing the situation, you know, nine, ten, eight, and five were really, really hit pretty hard, we had a lot of accumulation there, so we really tried to strategize on focusing on those areas. So the first thing we did in our approach, instead of going to landfill, we set up a disposal site at the spoil yard at our service center, so those trucks could just go there quickly, dispose of the brush and bulk and get right back on the streets and start collecting. Republic had one truck focused on areas north of Wheatland and then their second truck helped us out south of Wheatland. And then Camacho really focused in on eight, nine, and ten, those really hard areas. And then we would constantly, every day, we'd meet and get a progress report from both companies on where we were. We had a spreadsheet that we'd update to see how much accumulation happened and where they were, we did, I believe we shared that or mid-last week with y'all. And then that also kind of helped us adjust where needed, there were some cases where a truck got ahead of schedule in one service area, so we could deploy them somewhere else where there was more heavy, heavy loads to pick up, so. But really, our overall object with this approach is to get caught up before we start the new collection routes for July, next Monday, July seventh. And so this is just a summary of the accumulated brush we've collected to date, and just to walk you through this table, we have the date, the truckloads, as well as the cubic yards hauled in the service area, and you can see it by day. We have Camacho Tree Service and Landscaping on the left and on Republic Services on the right. And as of yesterday, we had one hundred and eighty-eight loads hauled with five thousand six hundred ninety-three cubic yards of brush collected. And that was all taken to the spoil yard. I actually got a number from Joel this evening that it really is at two hundred loads and six thousand, little over six thousand cubic yards, so it was a lot. So we took some pictures for y'all of the spoil yard, so you can kind of get an idea of what that looks like. You can see here all the brush line there, a few more zoomed in pictures. And we took this picture of the Republic Services truck, you can see brush hanging out on the side, that's a forty-five cubic yard truck, if I'm not mistaken. So it just kind of gives you the impact of how much brush was really out there. And so our next steps is we're going to continue to work this plan. We do have some good news that we really believe we're pretty caught up now. We had Camacho Services come out today, this is their final day out with the city, so we appreciate their services. We'll start resuming disposal to the landfill instead of the spoil yard starting tomorrow. And then we're really going to start spot checking this week to make sure there's not any other areas we missed. And then even in July, I think we're going to have to do a QA QC, because sometimes you'd have residents that may have been like, well, I'll just wait and put my brush out and take some time to do it, so we want to make sure that we don't have any more excess accumulation, so we'll be keeping an eye on that. And I think really, when this is all said and done, staff and Republic Services is going to get together and really look at areas where we can enhance our coordination and our improvement, making sure we're being a little more proactive, trying to take this on a little earlier. And then just also looking if there's any other ways we can add more tools to our belt to address these situations in the future. And then more importantly, I think we also need to look at education, just making sure our residents know what can be put out, what cannot be put out. And I think that'll help us go a long way too, and making sure that we have an expeditious brush and bulk during the storm seasons that we see every year. This does conclude the presentation, again, thanks to Joel and the Public Works team, as well as Republic Services for their help on this, and we're available for any questions.
I'll start by telling you that I really appreciate the fact that you very quickly recognized that Republic didn't have enough trucks to manage this particular run through June and reaching out to a third party to come back in. And I do remember that you brought them in last spring and it was quite effective. So I really appreciate that because once you recognize you've got the problem, the key is not to let it go. And this time, I don't think it extended out as badly as it did last year. So that's a milestone for me to see that we're on it, recognize the problem, and resolve the issue. So thank you all, all the staff and Republic, the city managers, we go together. For being involved, I appreciate it. Anybody else have questions, comments?
I have a question. Is this pretty common amongst all trash companies? Because, I'm asking because I've received calls from citizens and saying that this is unacceptable and it continues to happen. So whether we're with Republic or someone else, is this a common incident that happens?
In my experience, I've seen it in other cities. I think the key is just making sure you're proactive, getting ahead of it, you know, the trash companies, they do their part, but they also have other cities they service. So it's just making sure you're proactive, you really need to stay on top of this really early, because whether you need to get your current provider to bring more trucks in or if you need to bring a third party in, it does happen. But it's just, the key is you've got to be proactive, we both need to be communicating and making sure that we're recognizing what's going on out there.
Yeah, and to what the mayor said, thank you for your proactiveness, much to it. Also, for city manager, I know that in stormwater, that debris being removed is part of pollution prevention, is that something that you're reporting as well in your annual report for your stormwater? Being recognized for the cubic feet that you have removed?
Yeah, and I'm getting a nod from Matt behind you, but yes, I have reported it, so.
Okay.
And the other thing I just mentioned here, Richard and I have been talking and we're going to talk with the team about making sure that for the future, we figure out not only ways to improve communication, but we also have this contract basically on standby that, you know, that we really start to see that there's a problem. I would say we were probably a week later than we should have been in this particular, but one week is better than where we were last year and so we're getting better, so.
And something else to recognize is when we do have a heavy, for whatever reason, whether it's a storm or everybody's just cutting for the summer, that it's a tremendous burden on those trucks and hydraulic systems, so it's not uncommon for one of them to go down. And it takes a while to get that repaired, so that's why having the backup, this Camacho Services, is important because in the midst of cleanup or a catch-up, we know we can go to somebody and get them here in a reasonable short time to help solve the problem. So we're getting, we're getting better at it.
What's this one?
Because, yeah, Mayor, and it's, Republic had an issue, the city had an issue and stuff, and making this coordinated effort.
You know what, it was okay at my house because I just kept cutting more branches for a while, so it actually helped me out. All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Oh, sorry, Mr. Coontz.
No, I just wanted to say, because, you know, some citizens, when you do get the calls and it's unacceptable, and some of them, I think we have a problem here, but I always tell citizens, I appreciate them letting us know because that helps us not get behind when we get those reports in, and you hear from four or five of us and then we can get on it sooner than later. So however they're telling us, we appreciate citizens letting us know.
Yes.
Absolutely. Okay, thank you all. All right, thank you. Can you, can I get a session? All right. Okay, so that wraps up our work session, we're now going to proceed into executive session. At six thirty-one, please, can I?
Mayor, let me ask you, do I stay on this website or do someone need to send?
Okay, Mr. Kuntz will join us in a minute, but welcome and thank you for your patience. We ran a little bit over, obviously, but we will go ahead and open our regular session at 7:33 PM.
Mayor Concheras, can you hear me okay?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, we'll invite our good friend Pastor Gitieris up to... I don't know if I got any more than me. The mic's right here. So with that, we're going to invite Pastor Gitieris to come up and lead us in the invocation.
Thank you, Mayor and Council for the invitation. Let's bow our head. Father, we thank you so much for this day. Father, it is such a blessing, Lord, to experience this gift of life today. Father, thank you for your mercy and your grace. And Father, this evening, we ask for your presence here. We ask for your wisdom in our conversations and our discussions, Lord. Father, I pray that you would bless our leadership here, Lord, with wisdom to govern well. And Father, more than anything, we pray for unity, we pray for clarity, and we pray for your peace. Father, we thank you for this evening. In Jesus's name, amen.
Please follow us in the pledge. Thank you. Okay, we'll move into... Is that better? Okay, thank you. We'll move into our reports. Start with my report. I just want to remind everybody of what a great celebration we have ahead of us this Friday for Fourth of July. There's been a lot of planning going into the parade and into the events after the parade leading up to the fireworks show. So please tell your friends and come on out. It won't be that hot. Come on out. We've got good entertainment. Staff's put a lot of work into this, and I think it's going to be just bigger and better than ever as it keeps getting every year. So welcome you all out there. Also want to remind everyone that this past week, we celebrated along with the fire department and the rest of the city staff, the retirement of Assistant Fire Chief Greg Chase, thirty... thirty-four year? Thirty-two, thirty-four? Who's counting? Just a great addition to our fire department from day one. He rose up through the ranks and became Assistant Fire Chief. And after that amount of time of traveling and back and forth, he lived quite a ways away. I think the decision was easy that he just thought he'd go ahead and hang it up. So quite a big turnout, quite a big event for his retirement, and a lot of people got to speak. And it was interesting. It was interesting. But we're sad to see him, but we're happy that he gets to spend more time with his family and especially that he gets to go fishing more. So he was looking forward to that. With that, go into council member reports. Councilman McBurnett.
Thank you, Mayor. The Duncanville Community Theater had their reveal. They have outstanding season coming up. It was fully and well attended. Good season. I'd suggest you go see a play or two. Also, we had some police promotions recently and want to congratulate those officers as well. As the mayor mentioned, Greg Chase had his retirement. The thing that I want to say about the promotions and the retirement as well is this city staff does a really good job of honoring these people and do a good job of that. And that same good job will show up in the Fourth of July festivities as well. Also, Dr. Andrea Fields, she worked really well with the city on stuff, but she retired from the school district. But she was very good. I know she was a good contact for Mr. Finch and him coming here. Also, I'm going to ask for prayers for Dorothy Wolverton. Her health is not very, very good, and I just ask for prayers for her. Also, July 10th, there's going to be the Roll Kart Town Hall. So we've had this cart project that's going to happen on July 10th. And then on July 22nd is going to be the big joint meeting, comp plans coming out, but that's going to be at the Field House and something. And lastly, I just want to wish everybody a safe and happy Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gooden.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City of Champions. I apologize ahead of time. I didn't have time to fully write out my thoughts, but there are some things that I would like to share with the community. So I'll begin with the Juneteenth celebration put on by the Arts Commission. That was thought of by Angela Thorpe Harris. I want to recognize her and all of her hard work and diligence in putting on a six-day event here for our city. That was no small undertaking. It was a big commitment to commit to that for six days in a row, and we had a lot of display of all types of art exhibits on those six days. So well done, Angela Thorpe Harris, and to all of the Arts Commission who came out to assist her with carrying that vision forward. The chair says all the time that they may not always agree, but they always find a way to come together and carry the arts forward here in our city, and we're forever grateful for that. Also, look out for... They're now doing grant cycles. So if you're interested in applying for a grant for arts here in our city, the next grant cycle is September 1st through September 30th. This first one has already closed, and they will announce soon who has been awarded some grants for arts. So please keep your ear out for that. But if you're interested in the future, please look forward to applying September 1st through the 30th. I also want to recognize Greg Chase and his retirement. When I first came onboard on council, he was one of the first staff members to greet me and to welcome me and make me feel at home. He joked around. He didn't put on any air, and I was able to be relaxed around him and be myself. And so thank you so much, Greg Chase, for your warm welcome, and I will miss you here in the City of Duncanville. As council member said, DCT Duncanville Community Theater, look out for that. And I'll also end with appreciating the staff. So Friday, we had a council retreat that the staff with the city manager guidance led the efforts on. So I want to say thank you for that particular retreat because we've had retreats before in the past, but this one, I walked away with so much hope for the future of what our city and the city staff is moving towards. When I hear things such as service level agreements and KPIs and higher expectations and the service that we're providing to our community, which is one reason why I wanted to get involved into council, is to assure our community that you were receiving accountability, you were receiving transparency, and building on that trust that had been kind of... you were receiving transparency, and building on that trust that had been kind of impacted. So, but we're heading in the right direction. Thank you, City Manager. Thank you, council, for always asking the questions, the diligence in doing your homework and reviewing, and because we can only make the best decisions by the information we receive from the staff. So thank you for listening to us, City Manager staff. I want to also recognize Angel Deal. Her presentation and her showing us how we're moving forward and implementing those things. I'm telling you, I walked away with so much hope going into a weekend where I was about to spend out in the heat camping with my family. So thank you for giving me a smile on my face to go and endure that heat with them. Thank you, and have a great day, City of Champions.
Mr. Koontz?
Thank you, Mayor. So Don's and Monica's comments reminded me, so the... Just as a reminder, the Duncanville Community Theater is, you know, supported in part by the city's hotel occupancy tax. And, you know, in addition to a great season, there's some really high-quality shows that they're going to be putting on this year. Also went to their theater camp. They put on a production of Willy Wonka's Kids. And it was a side of the theater that most people never get to see. I hadn't seen that side of the theater before. But for two weeks, they take about 30-plus kids, and somehow they get a very high-quality production out of those kids. Just only two weeks of rehearsals, and so the counselors, instructors, or directors of that show, it's just really high-quality. And it really... And one thing that I noticed about that was that some of those kids looked like me, and then some of them looked like Joe Vera Cruz, and some of them looked like Don Mac Burnett, and it was just a nice blend of... And the theater really is moving kind of forward and thinking about the future of the theater. And, you know, just kind of seeing that, you know, it is community-oriented. And so again, I just want to encourage people to continue to support the theater, because they're doing a lot of great things there. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, I see no other lights, so we'll move on to the City Manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Good evening. I want to piggyback on Councilmember Gooden's comments, but I want to thank the council. You guys have been putting so much time in with us. We keep asking for some additional meetings, the budget workshop last Thursday night, the council retreat on Friday morning, and I want you to know, we are listening to you. One of the items that came up in the retreat was, for instance, about tracking phone calls. And kudos to ACM Abernathy and ACM Rousher both. They've already met. They're looking, working with Angel on evaluating phone system solutions and better ways that we can track that and make sure that the residents are being responded to. So really appreciate all the input that you guys share with us so that we can keep moving things forward. We did have a... Want to share with everybody, we had a little bit of a situation with our court billing, unfortunately, with a vendor that we use and no longer being able to accept online bill payments. Julie, thank you for your help and dedication in trying to get residents to get in here to speak with our marshal and that stuff. But we're working on that, and ACM Abernathy's on top of that. And there's one thing I'll tell you about ACM Abernathy is he gets stuff done. He will figure out a way to make sure that that gets fixed as fast as possible and get that done, so. I want to give a quick kudos to our IT department. So many times, they're behind the scenes and making things happen. But what a lot of times you guys don't see is they are constantly behind the scenes and evaluating what are ways that we can save money? How are there ways that we can do things more efficiently, and I really want to commend them. And just finally, we've talked about the 4th of July, and our events planner, Devin, has been working very, very diligently to make sure that we've got a fantastic event coming up this week. We're really excited about Friday with the parade. Once Mac Burnett lets you guys go, I have no idea. You'll have to battle that with him on Friday morning. But anyway, with the Lions Club and get that thing kicked off, and then once we got the parade gone, then we've got a really exciting night with some great bands and entertainment, so I hope everybody comes out.
Great. Thank you. All right. With that being said, we're moving on to citizens' input portion of our meeting. I think we have the... I have to post it up there now. Oh, there you go. Okay, so just be reminded as you approach to give your name and address before you begin to speak. And with that, did we get any electronic submittals? Okay, so we'll move right into the first. Barry Gordon?
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council. One quick comment. I was not able to attend the briefing session, so I'm not sure exactly what was discussed, but I wanted to make one comment about what was one thing in the charter amendment that's being considered. I approve of three-year terms. Better? Okay. I approve of three-year terms for the Mayor and Council. And I commend this council for giving strong consideration to that change. I think it's a wonderful move for this city. Thank you.
Thank you. Julie Steger?
Julie Steger, 214 Meadow Creek, which is all one word, even though the City of Duncanville has changed it. But my topic this evening is change. Mr. Mayor, at your recent coffee, where I take notes for you, you were told that in a 30-year period of one resident, he had seen no change in this city. Nothing had changed. And I'm looking at all of y'all. I look at our first responders, and what I see is a massive change. And I think someone has blinders on, and they need to get a little bit more involved in order to see the changes that are happening in this city, which are great things. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item four, consent agenda. Gone over the two items in our briefing session. Mr. Mac Burnett?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve by Councilman Mac Burnett.
Second.
Second by At-Law or Mayor Protem. Gooden, please vote. Thank you. All right, that takes us into item five, items for individual consideration. There was no action to be taken as a result of executive session. We move on to item 5B, public hearing to consider amending Chapter 12B Parks of the Code of Ordinances to include nature preserves and associated rules and regulations. Mr. Stevenson?
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Bart Stevenson, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm here to share with you some proposed amendments to our Chapter 12B of our Parks Code of Ordinances. And the purpose of these amendments is a result of several conversations with our... Some of our stakeholder groups at the Lad Nature Preserve, most notably the Master Naturalist, in establishing some rules and regulations for the park so that we can better regulate what's going on out there. One, we want to add the definition of a preserve in the Chapter 12B, and that'll be talked a little bit more about here in a few minutes. We want to add the prohibited acts within a preserve. And we also want to ensure that the prohibited acts that are already within Chapter 12B of the Parks Code of Ordinances also applies to nature preserves. And this is all in an opportunity... In a purpose to keep people safe and also protect our nature, natural environments out at the Lad Nature Preserve. Talk about the definition of a nature preserve. Again, this comes directly out of the ordinance 12, 2023-2486, of what a nature preserve is all about. There's no changes to that from that ordinance. The additions to the protected or prohibited acts within the ordinance really are two. One is the protection of wild animals, and we are removing the right to kill dangerous snakes from all parks as well as the preserves. And then while we allow fishing in our parks, most notably, we have ponds in Waterview Park as well as Lakeside. We do not want fishing going on in our nature preserves. And then lastly, the addition of curfew hours for the Lad Nature Preserve to include 10:00 PM, which is the closing time of all of our neighborhood parks. We also included some, I guess, what I would consider to be declarations of intent as far as development of the Lad Nature Preserve. These are all specific to the Lad Nature Preserve within the Chapter 12B. And that is to include the conservation of native wildlife, plant species, and natural resources while providing opportunities for environmental education, nature observation, and passive recreation, as well as we want the nature preserve to remain in a natural and undeveloped state. The preserve will be used primarily for passive recreation, such as walking, birdwatching, and environmental education. The preserve will include low-impact infrastructure consistent with the Lad Nature Preserve master plan that was completed earlier this year. And then lastly, that we want to make sure that any violations that happen at the Lad Nature Preserve with unauthorized activities will be subject to enforcement accordance to city and park ordinances. And what this does, in its essence, is allows our police department to enforce all the rules and regulations that are currently within Chapter 12B, as well as the two that we are adding, to also apply to the Lad Nature Preserve. And a great example of that is parking. In our current parking, Chapter 12B, if parking is provided at a park, you must park within that parking area. You're not allowed to park within the park. And that's one of our major issues at the Lad Nature Preserve. We did put up barriers along all of the curb cuts along Daniel Dale. People are now jumping the curbs. So while it's helped, it's still not fixed our issue. So having the Lad Nature Preserve be a part of Chapter 12B, we're hoping that this will allow our police department, as they're driving by on Daniel Dale, seeing folks driving along the South Savannah, be able to stop and enforce those folks to get them out. So to me, that's a great example and a great benefit of making these additions to Chapter 12B that hasn't already been talked about. So with that, that's the end of my presentation. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing before we get into questions and responses from those who wish to speak. And the time is... 7:54 PM? I'll start by asking council, does council have any questions for Mr. Stevens and his report? Okay, none. So with that, I'll ask for those that may want to come forward and speak in favor of this proposal. I knew, I knew it.
Emily Bridges, 418 Eleanor, 75137. I am in favor of this, but I wanted to extend a thank you to the Master Naturalists for always keeping everything in line for what is best for the land itself, which in turn is the best for the community and us as citizens. Thank you very much, and to the Parks Board and you, council. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do we have anybody here who'd like to speak in opposition? Anyone to speak in opposition? Seeing none, have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to close by Councilman Mac Burnett, second by Councilwoman Penner Baker. Please vote. Close the public hearing at 7:56. Thank you. Council? Mr. Koontz?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few comments. First of all, I wanted to thank the city and park staff for addressing the parking issue. We know that parking is an ongoing problem out there, but I will say also, you know, we have... We play soccer games at Harrington, and people are parked on the soccer fields. And sometimes we drive by, there's a park, Oriole Park, in our district, and sometimes people are parked on that grass. And so, you know, we do find, you know, the parking issue is not just an issue at the preserve, but also in the city parks. And so we appreciate the attempt to deal with that issue and the work that's being done there. And then I couldn't see the slide number, but if we could go back, it was slide 50-something, right there. So when I looked in the ordinance itself, I didn't see the word primarily, but I know that word primarily has been an issue in the past. So, but I didn't... And I know this is a summary of what's in the ordinance, but I didn't see that word in the ordinance that we're approving. So I just wanted the city manager just to make sure, you know, what we're approving doesn't include that word. And then while we're... Somebody's looking that up. As far as the killing of the snakes, and I did notice that it is allowed in city parks by a trained professional. And I haven't... You know, in the time that we've been here, I've never encountered a snake at Armstrong Park or any of the other parks. I'm sure they're somewhere out there, especially like Harrington and even Redbird, some areas out there. I've never encountered a snake or heard of anyone encountering a snake that they tried to kill. But in, it sounds like the rare event that somebody might want to kill a snake, they would have to get a trained professional.
Correct. Our hope would be that, again, they would call 911 or Animal Control to have them, a professional, deal with that. That's not something we want our citizens attempting to do. Most folks don't know what a dangerous snake is versus a good snake.
Yeah.
And so, again, that's something we want a trained professional to be doing in not only the Lad Nature Preserve and all of our nature preserves in the future, but as well as our parks.
And I guess by dangerous, that probably refers to venomous.
Yes, I believe so.
And of course, a regular citizen wouldn't, probably wouldn't know the difference.
Correct.
But in the preserve, it would be strictly prohibitive, of course.
It'd be prohibitive in both, parks as well as the nature preserves.
Okay.
Yes.
Yes?
Mayor, if I could. So Councilmember Koontz, so the section specifically, it's Chapter 12B, the ordinance reads C. "The preserve will be used primarily for passive recreation, such as walking, birdwatching, and environmental education. Activities within the preserve will be limited to those that have minimal impact on the natural state of the land and its resources." So that is the actual verbiage from the ordinance, the proposed ordinance 12C.
Okay, well, I would suggest we remove that word simply because of the complications it's created in the past, if we can do that, or...
So I believe, and the attorney can correct me if I'm wrong, but you could probably make a motion to amend to strike the word primarily, if you'd like.
Thank you.
City Attorney, did you pick that up?
I did. And for the record, I will remove it and reprint page three of the ordinance, not to include the word primarily for, and it'll now be used for...
All right, thank you.
Well, then I'll go ahead, Mayor. I'll go ahead and make that motion to approve removing the word primarily from that section, as stated by the city attorney.
I'll second it.
Motion to approve with the amendment by Councilman Koontz, second by Councilwoman Mac Burnett. Please vote. Oh, there you go. Thank you. I'll note there are no staff or board reports.
That's correct.
That's correct. So we've concluded our business for this evening. At 8:01 PM, we are adjourned.
Today, we're going to talk about the recipe of home fire safety to keep you safe in your home. Unintended cooking is the leading cause of home fires and deaths. Always stand by your pan. If you leave the kitchen, turn off the burner. Remember to always turn pot handles away from the front of the stove towards the back so that they cannot accidentally be bumped over or pulled over the front of the stove. Always have a lid and oven mitt near your pan when cooking so that if a small grease fire starts, you can take the lid, slide it over the pan, and turn off the burner. When grilling, always make sure that your grill is in an open space and not near anything that can catch fire, like the side of your house, decking rails, or even tree branches. Also, never leave a grill unattended when it is in use. Clubbing and cooking don't mix. After a night out, order in. For more general information on cooking safety and fire prevention week, visit www.fpw.org. And for more information for kids and cooking safety, visit sparky.org.
I'm Officer Michelle Arias, the Crime Prevention Officer for the Duncanville Police Department. Today, I'm here to let you know what each permitted solicitor must wear if they're coming to your door. We have recently received several reports of suspicious people impersonating city or utility company employees.
As a reminder, each permitted solicitor should be wearing a reflective vest like this. The vest should display a pictured ID on the front side and a permit number on the back side. As always, if you see a suspicious person or suspicious activity, call 911 and report it immediately.
My name is Talia Lopez. I'm the Crime Victim Advocate for Duncanville Police Department. Crime Victim Advocate, what we do is that we help and support victims of violent crimes with education, information, and further resources. I work with a lot of domestic violence victims and their families. I provide support as well as resources. That includes the Women's Shelter, Genesis Women's Shelter, The Family Place, that's shelter for men, women, and children. Counseling support, because that's really important. Trauma Support Services of North Texas, as well as the Victim Intervention Program by Parkland. They provide those services, as well as immigration. I do assist with the UVisa process, as well as Bosaic Services. So there's an array of resources and services for victims that are experiencing domestic violence. Victims can contact me through my direct office line, that is 972-707-3832. They can always give me a call. I receive text messages as well, but I'm here to give them support and information.
The National Weather Service just issued a tornado warning. We've got to go shelter in place. When sheltering in place, whether at home, at work, or in public, you always want to shelter inside, never shelter outdoors. When sheltering in place, there might be an area with a sign that says Shelter Area. That means that this area is safe for you to shelter from a tornado. Shelter in a room that is most interior to the building, meaning that there are no windows in the room and none of the walls touch the outside. Once you're in this room, you want to stay here until the tornado threat has passed completely. In order to be extra safe once in your shelter room, the best thing to do is to get low to the ground. So crouch down on the floor, if you're in the bathroom, the best thing to do is get in the bathtub. Once you're crouched down on the floor, you want to be sure to protect your head. So cover it with your arms, if you brought a pillow with you, if you brought a helmet with you, keep your head protected. You also want to have your cellphone with you so that you can keep track on the radar or through emergency alerts so that you're sure once the threat has passed. Today, we're going to talk about how you can prepare for disasters before they strike. The first step is to get your family or your household together and talk about emergency planning. The first step there is to identify all the hazards that we face living here in North Texas. And it's no surprise to anyone that the list is very long, so identify those hazards and talk about how you would respond to all of those. The next thing you want to do is create a family or household communications list. Doesn't have to be a long list, the best thing to do is actually write it on a smaller piece of paper so that once you write down all the contacts you need...